We're on air, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Lucy Bisson. I'm the Chair of the Lewiston Planning Board, and I welcome you here tonight. Ms. Kittredge, could you call the roll, please?
Roger Dupree.
Yeah.
Joshua Najeeen.
Here.
Michael Markcott.
Present.
Shanna Cox.
Here.
Lucy Bisson.
Here.
Myself, Christine Kittredge, and Lee Albert.
Here.
Okay. And because Amy Smith, one of our regular board members, is not in attendance this evening, Lee, an alternate, will be a voting member this evening. Alrighty. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda, Ms. Norton?
No, we don't.
Okay. Correspondence?
Um, no, we don't.
Okay. Do you want, well, the email that you sent out, is that correspondence?
The one I copied you on this afternoon, no.
Okay.
I just wanted you to be aware.
Okay.
But I did want to state, just as a reminder, even though our agenda says our next meeting is May 22nd, I do want to remind you that the following night, the 23rd, is a joint meeting with city council, just so you make sure you have that on your calendar in advance. I'll send out a reminder about that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. In that case, we'll go on to public hearings. And the first public hearing is Gendron Realty LLC has submitted a development review application to amend the prior approved development plan to modify the stormwater design on Lot 15 of the Gendron Business Park located at 23 Gendron Drive. Ms. Norton?
Okay, great. So, the first two items on the agenda, this one that you just read and the next one, are related to each other. So, this application, or for amendments to Lot 15 in the Gendron Business Park, the next item that you'll be seeing is amendments to Lots 16 and 17. So, they submitted them as two separate packages. In some ways, they relate to each other, so I just wanted to share that initially. So, this application is, or all three of them really, are related to warehouse spaces that are not yet constructed but had received approval in the past. So, they're looking to make some modifications. For Lot 15, the lot was approved for a building that's 120,000 square feet. They're looking to amend it to be 140,000 square feet. And at that time, they had intended on building a stormwater pond on Lot 15 to take care of the water from Lot 15. When we get to Lots 16 and 17, they had a similar plan where water from 16 was going to go to an existing pond, and the intent is to move that water all to Lot 17. So, Lots 15, 16, and 17 would all drain to a stormwater pond on Lot 17. So, for this application, though, those are the primary changes, are the building size and where the stormwater is going. With their proposal, we are looking at the parking, and so our ordinance would require typically for a thousand, sorry, a 140,000-square-foot building, 143 parking spaces. Because of the nature of the project, it's not retail, being warehouse space, there's a number of different types of tenants that could go into that space, and their parking needs could be very different. You could have a warehouse that only has 20 employees versus a warehouse with a very different need. So, they're proposing 71 spaces. Our ordinance, Section 17 Offstreet, or, sorry, Article 12, Section 17, Offstreet Parking, does state that the number of required spaces shall be determined by the planning board in situations where the applicant can show a differing need for parking. So, one of the things that the board would want to do this evening is make a finding as to whether the 71 spaces is sufficient before you would take action on the application. There also are a couple of suggestions for conditions of approval. So, at this time and in the future, it is the intent that Lots 15, 16, and 17 would stay in the same ownership. We all know that sometimes plans change. So, what staff has talked to the applicant about is, instead of creating an easement and updating deeds at this time, that there would be an affidavit filed at the county registry of deeds that would go with the parcels, that would state that before any of those three parcels are sold, that there would be a determination of the maintenance responsibilities between those lots for the stormwater, and access to those lots would be granted. So, it's kicking the can down the road, but it is providing something at the registry that would get triggered at the time of sale when someone's doing research. Then, we also have a delegated review authority for the stormwater from the state. So, this was a project that in the past, Maine DEP had reviewed. We've filed that request, which is a standard form, to allow Lewiston to do that stormwater review. Instead, staff has done it. It's satisfactory. So, it's just a condition of approval that before we grant a building permit, we would get that sign off from Maine State DEP. And finally, that we would have a professional engineer sign off on the construction that is per plan before a certificate of occupancy for the project.
Okay. Are there any questions from members of the board to staff? Okay. Ms. Gatto?
Sorry, I just have one more question. In the board's effort to be business and development friendly, we've been reviewing a number of zoning and ordinances. And I'm just, the way that the parking ordinance would read for somebody who's looking to develop in a light industrial wholesale or storage, does it make it pretty clear that a waiver can be granted and that final determination is by the planning board? And is it clear on which scale that's triggered? Just as we've been reviewing parking in so many other use cases, there's, this just really seems out of alignment with most of the needs within those spaces. I appreciate that we can look at each case individually, but I think as we try to be developer-friendly, it's important to make that not something someone has to dig for, but kind of upfront. And if it isn't that way, can we add that to a list of things that we're kind of reviewing proactively?
Yeah, I think it's written right now. It does provide certainly that relief mechanism. I'm pulling up that language a little more in-depth to read it to you. So, after you go through kind of each use and what the requirement is, the final one says, either uses not specifically listed or able to be placed in one of the categories or listed uses which can be clearly shown to have a differing parking need, either fewer or greater than otherwise required. And then, it provides for language here that the number of spaces required would be determined either by the planning board for a major project review, if it's the staff review committee that they would determine it, or if it's de minimis change, then it would be the planning director. So, there is that mechanism here. I appreciate your comment because it does seem like sometimes when we look at some of the uses, the requirements may be something we would want to reconsider at some point in time. But certainly, I think it's clear that there is that option available.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions? Would the applicant like to come up and? If you would identify yourself, Mr. Gatto. Welcome back.
Hi, I'm that guy.
Yeah.
My name is Mike Gatto. I'm here tonight to represent the project. With me tonight is Dave Gendron, the owner, and his son-in-law, Steve Harris. We're here to present three projects tonight. So, I don't know if you want me to go through the details of the project. Staff report's pretty complete. I can just answer questions. There's a bunch of people in the public. I'm not sure if they're here for this or another one.
Yeah, I don't know. Okay.
We're waiting to find out, too.
I have a kind of a question.
Yep.
Okay. So, I'm looking at the plot plans and stuff, and the water, you know, stormwater's going to go from 15 to 17, through 16 and into 17. So, can you show me how it's going? I mean, I don't see, you know, my limited plan.
Well, we don't want to make it too clear.
Plan reading is, just doesn't.
Let's see what we got here. Okay, so. I'm not sure I know how to drive this one. Sorry. It looks like the screen is bigger. So, stormwater is going to get into, boy, oh, this is erosion control.
All the way up at the top? If you push that minus button, it might zoom you out some.
There we go. Here's the one I want. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so stormwater pipes are all here, right there.
Okay.
They go over to here. There's another line over here that feeds this one. I was on the wrong plan. And then, it goes down across Priscilla Drive and down through Lots 16 and 17.
Okay.
Okay, and if I've got the right plans here, the last plan in the set, might be a Phase 1. Okay, here we go. So, here's where it crosses Priscilla Drive that I just showed you, and it will go down this proposed driveway along 16, come down here onto 17, come down over here, and then go into the detention pond. We're going to enter the detention pond. So, the idea is, instead of building three detention ponds, one for each lot, these ponds can be six figures plus. Okay?
Yes.
And there's a certain volume that has to go anyways. We're trying to put one pond in. Lot 16 was originally designed to go to the main pond in Gendron Drive. There's a large pond that the city owns.
Okay.
Lot 16 was originally designed to drain that way. We've collected the drainage from Lot 16 and put it into this pond so that if Priscilla Drive gets extended in the future, then that stormwater from the road could go into the pond that the city maintains. That was a deal that was done in 2008 when it was originally approved.
Okay.
So, basically, we're trying to do it all on one pond, give us more development. That's why we can go to 140,000 square feet and have one pond to save costs on that.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Dupree?
Mike, where's the catch basin that Public Works was concerned about?
Uh, yeah, that was one of the comments. It's up in the driveway. I'm sorry, I don't know the specific one. They thought there was too much.
Catch basin number two grate.
Yeah. They thought there was too much water flowing to it, so we changed the grate to a bigger grate. Uh, this is erosion control. We got a couple chances here that maybe we can make this work. CB1. So, CB1 is, CB2 is probably downstream.
Yep.
Yeah.
There it is.
In the corner. So, that was the one they wanted us to use, a bigger grate. So, we put a two-by-three inlight grate. And, you know, every engineer has a license, and every engineer has a different opinion.
Absolutely.
I love them dearly. I work with a lot of them. Happy to work with them. But there was a concern, so our engineer looked at it, and he updated it, and apparently it's, we haven't heard any back comments, so apparently it's.
All right. Anyone else have any questions? Ms. Gatto?
I'm just going to ask you, Mike, the same question that I asked Ms. Norton, and knowing that you have the advantage of having done business for a long time in the city of Lewiston. But when you're looking at the use related to parking, is it readily available and clear to you that you can ask for a waiver and that that really significant amount of required parking is somewhat optional? Or is that something that we should look at in terms of your perception?
I've been doing it in Lewiston here for over 40 years now.
So, pretend you're not.
Forty-five, okay. And I don't, I would say over 50% of the time, I ask for waivers. Because the standards you have in the ordinance don't seem logical in many cases. So, very often, I'm looking at the client, and I'm looking at the use, and I'm trying to come to you folks and say, can we have a waiver? We want this number instead of this number.
Yeah.
So, it is obvious that the waiver's there, but I, you know, it's become obvious because I've done it a lot of times.
Yeah. So, it might be to our advantage to maybe look at that and see if we can't change it, change the language somehow?
Well, I think if you could change the parking standards.
Well, that's what I mean, the parking standards. Absolutely. Okay.
Warehouse standard in Lewiston is far different than it is in many other places.
Yeah.
So, I think if you were to look at the parking standards, you probably would find a bunch of different stuff out there today. Plus, there's also a push to have less parking. Retailers don't like that. But, so you gotta, you gotta work with the people. Because I've been here, too, and said, no, we want five per thousand instead of three per thousand. Because that's what the retailer demanded, or he wouldn't build a building. So, the flexibility is good and important, but looking at the chart would not be a bad thing.
Thanks. All right. Ms. Norton, would you please make a note that we want to, that's one of the things we want to look at? Thank you. Anyone else have any questions, comments? Okay, since this is a public hearing, I will open it up to the public. If anyone wants to speak for or against, if you would step up to the podium, identify yourself with your name and your address, and you will have three minutes to make your comments. And you can come up only once per item. So, we have three items, four items. You can come up four times. Okay? So, I will open it up to the public. Is there anyone out in the audience who wishes to speak for or against this project? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the board. And do I have any further discussion? No? Then I'll entertain two motions.
The first is the finding.
The first is the finding for the parking, and the second is the motion for the development review.
So, I move to make a finding in accordance with Article 7, Section 17.
Twelve.
Sorry, 12.
Sorry.
You're right.
Twelve.
I'm not Greek. Roman, sorry.
Yep, not good at Roman numerals. Okay.
Offstreet parking and loading that the proposed 71 parking spaces for 23 Gendron Drive, Lot 15 of the Gendron Business Park are sufficient for the proposed use.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roger, okay. And is there further discussion? In that case, I'll call the roll. Roger Dupree?
Yep.
Joshua Najeeen?
Yes.
Michael Markcott?
Yes.
Shanna Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
LeAnn Albert?
Yes.
And Lucy Bisson? Yes. I will entertain the second motion.
I'm happy to make a motion that the application submitted by Gendron Realty LLC to amend the development review for 23 Gendron Drive, Lot 15 at Gendron Business Park meets all of the necessary criteria contained in the Zoning and Land Use Code, including but not limited to Article 13, Section 4 approval criteria, and that approval be granted with the following conditions: that prior to the issuance of a building permit, an affidavit be filed with the county registry of deeds, which requires a cross-easement agreement which would provide access to Lot 16 and to stormwater utilities with maintenance responsibilities for Lots 15 through 17; no building permits shall be issued until DEP signs off on the city's delegated review authority for development of these lots; and prior to a certificate of occupancy being issued, a professional engineer must provide a stamped statement indicating all stormwater in-site improvements have been completed in accordance with the approved plan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Najeeen, okay. Any further discussion? Then I'll call the roll. Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Najeeen?
Yes.
Michael Markcott?
Yes.
Shanna Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Lee Albert?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson? Yes. Okay. All right. On to the second public hearing. Gendron Realty LLC has submitted a development review application to amend the prior approved development plan to modify the stormwater and the proposed building sizes for Lots 16 and 17 of the Gendron Business Park located at 3 and 5 Priscilla Drive.
That's a different file.
Ms. Norton?
Sorry. Thought I could move it.
Okay. Okay, so similar to the last application, this is an amendment for Lots 16 and 17 in the Gendron Business Park for warehouse spaces that are not yet constructed. The modifications proposed are to change the building sizes on the two lots from what they were approved for. In the case of Lot 16, the building would get smaller. In the case of Lot 17, the building would get bigger.
No, get smaller.
Also smaller. And then, the stormwater pond on Lot 17 would change, and there would be the stormwater piping from Lot 15 would cross Lot 16 to Lot 17, and water from Lot 16 would be captured and put onto Lot 17. One added element of this review is that Priscilla Drive is not completed. Philly built out, so as part of this plan, they did have to extend Priscilla Drive far enough to provide frontage for Lot 16, which they have done and shown on the plans. So, at this point, staff doesn't have any additional comments. Our recommendations for approval include the same affidavit that we just talked about for Lot 15, include either a performance guarantee that would guarantee that that road frontage would be built out prior to the issuance of the building permit for Lot 16, or that there be, that the road actually be built and be accepted by the city. So, there's those two options to satisfy that. And then, the other two are same conditions from the prior package. This also has DEP sign off that's required for the city to be delegated. That's review authority because this was reviewed previously by DEP in the past. And then also, that there would be an inspection after it's been constructed before a certificate of occupancy is issued.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board to staff? Does the applicant wish to make any?
I'll just make a short statement. This is more typical Gendron Drive building with several units in each building, so that they can be leased out to different tenants. There is a lot more parking. I think I can move this up here. Yeah, there's a lot more parking provided with this one, so the parking is, come on. You can do it. I guess it's slow. It doesn't want to go.
That's the other one.
But anyways, there's more parking out in the front. We're going to build Priscilla Drive, as shown in the dock, up to here to give the 100 feet of frontage. The rest of Priscilla Drive may or may not get built until new development or other developments occur and stuff. So, I think that's pretty much it, unless you have questions.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments for staff? Okay. In that case, I will open it up to the public. If anyone wishes to speak, if you would step up to the podium. And is there anyone who wishes to say anything about this project? In that case, I will close it from the public, and I will return it to the board, and I'd entertain a motion.
I'm happy to make a motion that the application submitted by Gendron Realty LLC to amend the development review for 3 and 5 Priscilla Drive, Lots 16 and 17 at Gendron Business Park meets all of the necessary criteria contained in the Zoning and Land Use Code, including but not limited to Article 13, Section 4 approval criteria, and that approval be granted with the following conditions: that prior to the issuance of a building permit, an affidavit be filed with the county registry of deeds, which requires a cross-easement agreement which would provide access to Lot 16 and to stormwater utilities with maintenance responsibilities for Lots 15 through 17; that prior to the issuance of a building permit, either a performance guarantee, meeting requirements of the Zoning and Land Use Code, Article 13, Section 12, be provided, or Priscilla Drive be built out to provide 100 feet of frontage for Lot 16 and be accepted by the city; that no building permits shall be issued until DEP signs off on the city's delegated review authority for development of these lots; and that prior to a certificate of occupancy being issued, a professional engineer must provide a stamped statement indicating all stormwater in-site improvements have been completed in accordance with the approved plan.
Do I have a second? Roger. And if further comments or questions from the board, in that case, I'll call the roll. Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Najeeen?
Yes.
Michael Markcott?
Yes.
Shanna Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Lee Albert?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson? Yes. Okay. On to bigger and better things. Third, okay, MRE LLC has submitted a development review application for a new 10,651-square-foot retail space on the 21.5-acre Promenade Mall site located at 855 Lisbon Street. And Ms. Norton?
Okay, so this project is located at the Promenade Mall in the existing parking there at 855 Lisbon Street. The project is to develop a new 10,651-square-foot retail building which would be attached to the Advanced Auto Parts building. Impervious surfaces would actually be reduced with this project by 12,407 square feet. There's some lawn area that's being added when they redo the parking lot, so no stormwater design was required. The project site, because it is part of the mall and a number of uses that have been in that parking lot, has passed approvals for a set number of traffic trips, as well as, sorry, there's already water that's been installed to support the building when Advanced Auto Parts was constructed, and they intend to share the water service. So, there is sufficient traffic for the proposed use as credit from prior uses. There's already utilities on site. This also, similar to the other projects, was reviewed by Maine DEP in the past, and so we, again, have submitted a request for delegated review authority for that, so that will be part of the conditions. So, there was one thing that had come up for me after I had sent out this review. The applicant has proposed six street trees on Essex Street, which is terrific and meets our requirements. There's also screening proposed for the dumpster. They're using a solid fence. Further reading of the ordinance, really, the loading area adjacent to that dumpster should also be screened. So, I'd like to have the board consider adding a condition of approval that the screening would be extended between the dumpster and the building to incorporate that loading area as well. It could be the same fence that they're using for the loading area or for the dumpster. It could be vegetated, you know, kind of the applicant's choice, but that would be one addition. But otherwise, we have two standard conditions of approval being proposed, as well as that one.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments from members of the board?
Oh, and I'm sorry, I see that there's an error on your motion sheet at the end there. So, I'll make a little correction on that and bring that up to the chair.
Ah, yes, I see. The names have been removed, left off.
Yeah.
To protect the innocent, maybe? Ms. Gatto?
Again, there is public here, so I'm not sure if they're here for this one. It was good on the other, so we'll see how it goes. I don't, I won't take too much time, but the area that they were talking about, the dumpsters over in this corner, and they're talking about extending the fence to the corner of the building, and the condition of approval that either the fence or plannings is fine with us. We find that acceptable. There was a, I don't know if I can go backwards here. We'll try and see if we can go up and look at presentation graphic. There was a couple presentation graphics that I did in color that showed, this one here is kind of showing the existing condition of what's going on, and the one below it is showing what we're proposing to do. The 12,000 square feet is for the Dollar Store site only. There is additional area here that will be taken out as well as part of our maintenance of the mall in separation of the site, so that impervious area is going to be less when you see the next application at this site. be less when you see the next application at this site. I think I talked about there may be two or three before the summer's done. Uh, we're working on them hard, we just can't get the work done. Uh, a lot of people weren't busy, so, um, if there are any questions, I'll answer your questions, um, otherwise, I'll stand aside.
Okay, anyone have any questions, Ms. Cox?
I just have a comment. Um, that parking lot has been a place to, by young children to learn to drive as they became permit drivers. And I was, uh, so I spent a lot of time in that parking lot, and the recent improvements that you've made since in, increasing the warehousing are fantastic, but this delineation of, of space, I think is going to be a really nice improvement.
I was just going to make those comments. I think, well, not the part, not the driving part.
Driving down there?
No, no, no.
Yeah, we don't allow driving going through the parking lot.
No, no, actually, I taught my kids in the cemetery.
A lot more damage they can do there.
I did, they, they, no, they can't kill anybody because they're already, you know, but it, it's just lots of corners and it's narrow streets and anyways.
Yeah.
Uh, this, it is, it looks, it's going to look fantastic. I think it, it's going to separate it so that the, if you're going shopping or to eat, you're going to come in from Lisbon Street, and if you're, you know, if they're, they're the trailers and all that, they're coming in from Essex, and I think that's fabulous. Okay, anyone else have any questions or comments? Mr. Najin?
Um, I just wanted to double check, so there's like six trees going on the Essex Street side, and that's because there's two residences there or one residence?
Uh, it's based on the formula that you have of so many trees per foot.
It's, yeah, it's our street tree standard, it doesn't actually have to do with the residents.
Okay, it doesn't actually have to separate between residences?
No, if the screening came up because the loading space is visible from that area as well, so.
Got you, okay. And how many trees are coming down? Are any trees coming down at all?
I don't think they're really...
It's all paved, so I...
I don't think they're...
We may be losing one or two within the parking lot, uh, that we're going to create green space and stuff and do some, do some, uh, some of the landscape islands might lose a couple of trees, but as far as I know, it's all paved.
So this looks really good as far as delineation between where the...
Yes.
The warehouse will be and where the retail space will be, and this is not, uh, by any means your fault whatsoever, but that connection across Lisbon Street, I just want to kind of bring this up so everybody's aware of it, that those six lanes with the slip lane, um, that's very challenging for people to cross the street on foot. Thinking about Dollar General and then again, even the Starbucks with the high school right there, that might be something we might want to look at at some point as far as talking to Maine DOT about creating some type of control there that slows, slows some of that traffic. Um, but again, that's not, has nothing to do with this, it's just connected.
You're talking about the main entrance to the mall that's been like that for a long time?
Exactly.
Right, and, and he's talking about pedestrian crossing.
Yeah, pedestrian crossing, I, I agree, it's going to be complicated for pedestrians to get across the street. We do have a sidewalk, and we've defined the sidewalk on the, on the south side, I guess it is, or the east side, um, that we're proposing to be out there, but that's probably a city...
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Maybe somebody like Jeff could help us with that.
Yeah, yeah, he is, he is here.
Condition of approval of a pickleball court?
I think we'll, we'll have an uphill battle about it anyways because Maine DOT has a lot of control over what happens.
Absolutely, yeah, okay. Anything else from anyone? All right, in that case, I will open it up to the public. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor or against this item? Look, if you would step up...
There's one in the back.
You, please identify yourself with your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
Um, my name is Kim, I live at ninety Summit Avenue.
What's your last name, Kim?
Plo.
Okay.
Um, I've lived there for twelve years, and, um, my concern is the existing loading and unloading area of that area that we're talking about. Excuse my oratorical skills, I've never been to a planning board meeting before.
You're doing great, it's okay, you're fine, you're fine.
Um, it's just very loud, all hours of the night. Um, I have a couple neighbors here as well that have some concerns, but I was just curious if anything could be done about that. I don't know if it's the loading dock itself, I don't know if it's the forklift driver, but the more, the deeper they go into the trailer, the harder the forks will slam. It's just loud, it's annoying. Uh, we have tractor trailers that are parked out in that parking lot all night too, idling their trucks, and I don't think that's allowed. I don't know if it is or not, but I don't care, but if they could go out back of the building and idle or to the other side?
Okay, all right, that's not quite part of this issue, but we can bring it up, uh, at a, at a different time.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Uh, my name is Larry Fox, I live at one oh two Summit. I've been there for about thirty years. At one time, the front of that mall was, was all commercial, and I, I don't know when it was changed, but as, as this lady just said, the trucks out there are terrible. They're dropping skids there, I guess in some places that they're damaging the homes, but you hear backup alarms and, and dropping skids there all day long. Uh, as I say, there was a trucking company in there when the Jewish people that, from Waterville owned it, and it was, I'd been to a meeting then, and that was all commercial on this side of the mall. It's now nothing but, but a warehouse. No one told us about being a warehouse. When, when did all this take care of?
I'm not sure, it's been several years since it's been converted.
Well, I know it has, but we weren't told anything about it, and it's getting worse.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else wish to make?
Hi there, my name is Fabrizio Olivera, I live in one oh six Summit Avenue, um, been living there since two thousand twelve. Um, my wife has been living there since two thousand nine. We're, I'm sorry, this is not a concern of this meeting, but we're, you're also talking about the same issue. Uh, I don't know what's going on with that warehouse, um, if it's being used for some industrial work, but, um, we have our house shaking, we have crack on the walls that I've been taking pictures, um, it's starting to crack our walls. We have neighbors that they complain that their window also cracked for the shaking. Um, whatever operations they're doing right now over there on this location, I don't think it's appropriate for the area. Um, I don't think, it should be in a commercial space, it should be an industrial space. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, in that case, I will close it to the public. Um, I suggest perhaps that, uh, you who have concerns about the warehousing, maybe make an appointment with Mr. Gendron and, um, and have a chat with him. Uh, I'm sure he would be willing to speak with you, and I'm not sure what, what can be done, but I'm sure that if you guys get together, uh, you might be able to at least air out your grievances and stuff regarding the warehousing. This, this isn't really the warehousing, so, okay, thank you so much.
I'll, I'll also mention, um, that people can always, uh, file a complaint with the code department if there are excessive noise complaints, um, that's something we could certainly look into. We don't have any complaints on file that have been made for this, but you certainly could.
Okay, all right, are there any questions or comments from, from the board? In that case, I would entertain a, a motion.
In that case, I have a question for Shelley.
Okay.
Shelley, can I try filling in the bank and see how we do?
Yeah.
Uh, the agent would be M R E LLC. I nailed it.
Yes.
Yeah, that feels great. Okay, I'd like to make a motion that the application submitted by M R E LLC for a new ten thousand six hundred and fifty-one square foot building at eight hundred and fifty-five Lisbon Street meets all of the necessary criteria contained in the zoning and land use code, including but not limited to Article thirteen, Section four approval criteria, and that approval be granted with the following conditions. Prior to a certificate of occupancy being issued, a professional engineer must provide a stamped statement indicating all site improvements have been completed in accordance with the approved plan, and that no building permits shall be issued until DEP signs off on the city's delegated review authority for development of these lots, and that screening on the dumpster area be extended to screen the loading dock.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Pardon?
Fence or shrubs?
I, I believe our design criteria allows you to do either, but your plan indicates...
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, and if you extend the one, uh, if you extend the one that you've already got there to save on, on expenses, you should be in good shape.
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion from members of the board? In that case, I'll call the roll. Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Najin?
Yes.
Michael Markov?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Lee Albert?
Yes.
Lucy Bissin? Yes. So if, if you would, uh, you know, maybe if you guys go out in the hall, you can speak with Mr. Gendron and, uh, Mr. Gatto and, and see if you can make me arrange your, a meeting and to discuss the issues with the warehouse. Okay? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
See you many times over the summer, sir.
Yes, see you again.
Um, and anyone who is chatting in the hallway, if you could just do it far from the door so we don't hear it, I'd appreciate it, thanks so much.
Or the door could be shut, would that be appropriate?
That's also a possibility, but, okay.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Pickleball. Pickleball.
Woo, barn burner.
Right, must be.
I'm excited.
Okay, so, next, public hearing. Lewiston Public Works has submitted a conditional use permit and development review application for the development of pickleball courts at fifty-five North Temple Street. All right. Supposed to be Craig, but...
Yeah, you're doing this all alone tonight, huh?
Ah.
Kudos, yes.
I was on vacation, Craig is sick, and I couldn't even, he couldn't talk to me on the phone.
Just put that in the karma jar so he like extends that favor back to you someday?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, he has plenty of days.
All right, ooh, and it's colored.
It is colored.
All right, oh, there it is.
Great.
Okay.
So this project is on the same location as the fire station at fifty-five North Temple Street.
Shelley, will you put your mic in a little bit?
Oh, yes.
We're dealing with a vibrating wall, yeah, first sound, yeah, and we can't, can't hear you too well.
Uh, yeah, so this project is on the same lot that the, um, current fire station is on, uh, fifty-five North Temple Street. It is a new construction on vacant land, um, and it would include four pickleball courts. The project is in neighborhood conservation A where the use of, um, a non-intensive outdoor recreation is allowed with a conditional use permit. So the applicant is here tonight for conditional use permit, um, as well as the development review of the project. So in addition to the new, uh, four new courts, there will be a new gravel, or I think it's reclaimed asphalt, um, driveway off of, uh, North Temple Street that will go back and will have ten parking spaces that are designated on it. Um, the courts themselves will be fenced for security, well, for the balls, I would assume. Um, there's no lighting, there's no lighting proposed, um, so it would be daytime use only. There are, um, wetlands on site, and so there is one wetland that would not be directly impacted, but its buffer that's required by, um, by the state would be impacted, so there is a permit that would be required for that. Um, so that really, um, before you tonight is the conditional use permit and development review. The recommendations for conditions of approval that we have are that wetland buffer permit, and then, um, we did have some comments that we didn't have a chance to finalize with the applicant, but we believe they're minor in nature, so just addressing those comments would be the second, um, condition of approval. So those comments would be, the applicant showed a row of evergreen trees along the street. Um, our buffer standard requires a double staggered row instead. Sorry, it's off the page, so I'll just move that.
You, if, you can sit and speak from that microphone too, if it's easier.
It's okay. So, uh, so we just recommended that there be a second row of evergreen trees put in for, uh, visual buffer from, uh, the residences across the street. We had a couple of very minor changes, um, they were really, really just very nuanced and almost typographic errors in nature. Um, a couple of plans need to be stamped before, um, they would be signed. And then the G actually, since writing this, has been satisfied, so, um, we were provided with proof of the, uh, city council transferring funds for the project. Um, and then H was, was purely just a suggestion from staff that the driveway could be narrower. If the applicant wanted to make it narrower, they don't have to. Um, it could also be used for additional parking if need be because it is fairly wide. So those were the comments from staff.
Okay, does anyone from the board have any questions or comments for staff?
I have a couple of questions.
For staff?
About that last one that was crossed out.
Sure.
Or not last one, second to last one. So that financial capacity, Shelley, that's for the project, does it also cover general upkeep, or is that just folded into the overall Public Works budget long-term?
You're asking if the allocation for funding included maintenance over time?
Yes.
I believe, and, um, the applicant can probably speak to that better, uh, Jeff, if you want to jump in.
Okay.
I'm Jeff Bowley, city engineer of Faith Thomas, our project engineer, did most of the design work on this and put the application together. But to answer your question, uh, no, that's, maintenance is not, that was an LCIP item, a bond issue item for the construction only. So ongoing maintenance will be, have to put into the, um, operational budget, budget request every year.
Right, but it'll be a Public Works budget item?
Right.
Okay, thank you, all right. Anybody else have any com... Okay, um, did you guys have any comments or descriptions or whatever you would like to talk to? Because I believe we have a number of people here who are interested in, in getting more information, so, um, if you would speak to, and speak into the microphone, please.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Faith Thomas, uh, city, uh, guest project engineer for the city. Um, as you can see on the plans here, I'll kind of scroll around, I guess, so this is North Temple here on the south, south, um, edge of the sheet, and we have a paved apron coming in off of North Temple Street with some tip downs, because currently it's curbed. Um, so tip down there, and then coming back to reclaimed asphalt, uh, we're proposing a twenty-two foot wide driveway with one foot gravel shoulders on each, each side, so if a car's coming both ways, they can squeeze by each other. Um, on the right-hand side of the page, this is where the detention pond is proposed, which will collect roughly ninety-six percent of the runoff from the developed area, and then there's a buffer which will treat it, um, so that will satisfy quality standards. The pond will satisfy, um, quantity standards. So the pickleball court, um, is sloped less than one percent from north to south here into a, um, grass swale that will lead to a culvert that goes under the, the access drive leading to that pond. Um, the court sizing we got from the, well, here, I'll just go back up to the site plan, I think I have the dimensions called out. Zoom in. So there's seven foot spacing in between them, um, on the sides, ten foot on the ends. Each court itself, I believe, is twenty by forty-four, but, sorry, I'm trying to not give anybody a seizure by going too fast here.
So they're regulation?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Here we go. So yes, this is, this is regulation, um, size from what I could find. So it's twenty, twenty feet wide by forty-four feet long with a, what is it, seven foot wide non-volley zone on each side. And there we go, I think that's, I'll go back. We're proposing a four-foot tall fence, um, mostly due to, you know, the size...
So that they, we, whoever's playing pickleball won't have to run ten miles to get their ball?
Correct, yeah.
Thank you for...
Um, I think that's about the gist. There is a turnaround here at the end, um, for vehicle turnaround. Due to the proximity of the wetlands, we have a double row of erosion control mixed berm or silt fence, uh, down slope of that.
Yes, so is it a problem for you to add a second row of shrubs or trees along North Temple, uh, which is what we require, our, uh... Which is what we require, our, our standards require?
The only problem may be budget-wise. We're, we're very, we've been very tight to trying to minimize everything we can to stay within the given budget.
Steve, what he's got kicking around out back, like, you know, a bunch of trees here and there.
Good. You're the arborist.
At least five hundred dollars a tree, that's another six thousand dollars, so it adds up quick.
Okay. Yes, Roger?
How about seating area?
BYO chair. That's normal. Is that the case? There is no seating, you know, there are no bleachers, no, no seating of any kind?
No. Not proposed, no.
Yeah, so, besides the, the green part, okay? I mean, is that sloped? Is it relatively flat, the, you know, not the green part, but the outside the fence?
Oh, the swaled areas?
Yeah.
It's roughly a two percent slope.
Okay, so, that's, that's very minimal.
It's quite flat.
So, you could put a, you could put a chair and, and not fall over.
Correct.
Sure.
Okay, I'm just, all right, anybody else?
I had one question. Sure. It looks like on this, on this particular slide, it looks like eleven parking spots, but we're talking about tevin, ten. Is that because this one closest here is not actually a parking spot, but is an access?
Right, that's the eighty-eight space.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, Lee?
So, related to parking, and I ask this in support, are ten spots truly enough? Or is it just a function of the limited lot? I mean, we've got ten cars here tonight.
Right.
And the audience.
I'm sure we'll hear that it's not enough in a minute.
I mean, each of the four players would have to come in separate cars, and then you would have sixteen players, and that is the scenario in which it's not enough.
And again, I, we don't need to, I just, I raise it as a concern, imagining as people are cycling off court time, coming on. We see it at the tennis courts, at the high school, the traffic, so, just wanted to flag it.
Probably going to be a concern.
There is also parking available potentially at the fire station, right? Like, if there was a tournament.
I don't think that, I can't imagine the firemen would like, would be in favor of.
Can North Temple accommodate parking? I'm not familiar with the parking rule there.
Not really, not really.
The shoulder's not quite wide enough there, and especially with the crest of the hill, it's not a good place to park.
It's no parking?
It's not posted right now, but.
Ah, so, it could accommodate parking. It could do some damage, but it could actually, that's really the question I was asking.
I'm guessing it will get posted shortly after this gets posted.
Just making a point.
Okay. Okay, anyone else have any questions?
One other.
Sure.
More thinking about the courts themselves, and I don't actually know a lot about pickleball. So, will they be strictly regulation size for pickleball? Or do they have the possibility for evolution into other racket sports? Again, just thinking about what we've seen on the tennis courts at the high school.
Strictly pickleball.
Got it.
Okay, all right, anyone else? Okay, in that case, I will open it up to the public. If you wish to speak, go to the podium, say your name, your address, and you've got three minutes.
Thank you for hearing us tonight. As you can tell, there's quite a bit of support for this project. My name is Roger Bergeron. I live at forty-five Alderwood Road in Auburn. I, I'm a St. Doms grad, I graduated from Bates. I had a practice here for, medical practice for almost forty years in Lewiston, built a new building and so forth. And I've been in this room a few times. And anyway, I'm here in support of the project. I think it's wonderful. We've been waiting for it for probably, oh, three or four years anyway. It's come and gone a couple of times on the, on the agenda. I think that, a couple of things. One is, there isn't a lot of, for older people that live in the city of Lewiston, there isn't a lot of outdoor recreation, there's a lot of card-playing and so forth, but as far, and as, a lot of tennis players, as they get a little older, they tend to switch over to pickleball. And it's the fastest-growing sport in the world, and also in Maine and in US. The, it started out about a couple of years ago, playing on the tennis courts at the Lewiston High. And that's a limited amount, because we can't even use it until the end, middle of June, because of tennis players from the high school. And so, there's a huge demand, in the sense that we had twelve people on a list of the Lewiston Auburn Pickleball Group back a couple of years ago. And I'll give this to Roger, but we are now up to over two-hundred and thirty. This is the Lewiston Auburn Pickleball Group, and they don't have a real place designated for them. They're playing at the Armory, limited times, limited space. The Armory is now full, they've gone onto five courts in the Armory, because, and the people are still sitting down waiting. The other thing is, before I finish up, is I think Lewiston gets, you know, we have a hard time getting away from the Dirty Lou look, okay, it's so difficult. And this is one thing that has become really popular from outsiders. They're actually driving here from Bridgeston, from Bethel, from Brunswick, from Augusta, to come to play on our limited courts. So, I think, for one thing, it's a great idea, finally, for Lewiston to have a positive look to outside people, okay? That they don't drive by us all the time, that they will stop by and spend some money. They, they play in the morning, they go to lunch, okay, they stay in town, so the businesses like it. And this is only growing. This is, I, I love this project, it's wonderful, but you're just at the tip of the iceberg. Yeah, that's it. I, I'll give you also a pickleball and a pickleball racket to look at, just in case you've never seen.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor or against?
Hi, I'm John Doobie, and I own fifty-six North Temple, and it's an eight-unit apartment. I have a few questions. One is, how close to North Temple is that, to the street? Because in the picture, it makes it look like we got a pickleball court in the middle of, you know, a field or, what's the distance to the street?
Okay, well, what else, we'll, we'll answer your questions after, because you don't want to use, wait your time to let them talk.
Okay, I agree. So, I have a question, how close to the street it is?
Yeah.
People are going to be parking on the side of the road. I feel like I'm for the pickleball thing, but just not that location. There's a lot of houses there, the pickleball is very loud and an annoying sound. I'm going to have, there's eight families just in that one apartment, but there's a lot of houses up the street and in the back, and I think that we're going to run into a problem. There might not be a lot of residents right now, but when they hear the noise, then they're going to start complaining. And I feel like the project should go in the proper place, so we don't have these complaints within, you know, within the housing.
Okay.
Okay, and I, I think it's thirty feet, and that's pretty close. So, it's, you're going to be very close to houses, but the picture don't look that way.
All right, thank you. Yes, and could you address how close the pickleball courts are to the street?
So, it's roughly twenty-seven feet from the property line, and then there's about five feet to the sidewalk. And then, the sidewalk's five feet, so I guess to the street, we're talking thirty-seven feet.
Okay.
Roughly.
All right, thirty-seven.
Twenty-seven to the edge of the property line.
One, one other quick question, I, one other thing I wanted to bring up, too, is, you know, like, there could be, I know there, it looks like there's no utilities, there could be like, I'm sure they're going to have to put an outhouse and all this stuff, so it isn't going to be something that looks beautiful.
No outhouses, no lights?
No outhouses, no, no utilities.
Right.
No lights, no evening play either.
And I'm also concerned about, you know, what, who's going to, there's going to be people on the side, the noise, and that's my big thing.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor or against?
The name is Walter Beagle, I'm one-twenty-three Cotton Road, Lewiston. There's, like they say, it's a growing sport, we need places. It'd be nice to have six-foot fences, it'd be nice to have wind screens. Also, it is nice to have the lighting, so we can play at least, you know, eight, nine o'clock at night, or whatever, because some people don't even get out of work till five-thirty, six o'clock. Usually, we used to get together at five-thirty, six o'clock at night. The parking, would that be in four courts, so you've got sixteen people on the court, and usually, there's people waiting. Sometimes even going to Auburn, to the Pettingill School, we have like, sometimes thirty people show up to play in that gym over there. And they have quite a bit of parking, but something like that, with ten parking spots, you know? And I know, like you say, no existing places, and it's nice to have bathrooms. Like you say, outhouses are one thing, it's nice to have a, you know, running water and stuff, too, but, so. It'd be nice to get something that, wood lighting, wood, higher fencing, with, with wind screens.
Okay.
And additional parking, you know?
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else wish to say, speak for or against? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Any further questions or comments from the board? Mr. Dupree?
Is there any intention of increasing the size of this thing?
As far as adding more courts, or, or just?
Adding, adding additional courts, yes.
More courts, more parking?
I mean, there, there is room out back, if, if the city council decides that's what like, they'd like to do. It's, it's possible. We'd have to come back to the planning board.
Yeah, you'd have to get, you have to get the money from the city council and then come back to us, okay?
Can I just differentiate, it sounds like the site could accept more courts, but there is not plans to add more courts. Nor frankly, lights or bathrooms or anything that would double the cost of the project and significantly reduce the opportunity to have the project. Three or four-year wait, as you mentioned.
Right, there's currently no, nothing in the five-year LCIP for, for expansion.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Najin?
I'd just like to acknowledge that first, that I'm aware of how difficult it is for Public Works to put some of these installations in, in places. There tends to be, one, never enough money. And two, usually, some type of concern with the neighborhoods that they're located in. But, living very close to a neighborhood park, I can, I can say that I find great value in these spaces. And if it is something that, that, one, relieves some of the pressure on some of the other places, increases the, the amount of usage, and then also, two, shows to be promising, then, you know, that's a possibility that, that it could be built out. I, I don't think necessarily putting in like stadium lights and a bathroom at this moment is probably the best bet, even if we had the money for it.
Right.
But, yeah, so, I, I just wanted to say to Public Works, thank you for your efforts.
Okay, Mr. Marcock?
I remember when this was proposed alongside of the building of the fire department, new fire station out there. It has been a long time in coming. And I suspect that the funding probably originated from that period, the note about the LCIP.
Right, I think it was in FY twenty-two. So, would have been twenty-twenty-one when we made the budget request, and costs have certainly gone up since then.
And it's consuming pretty much the entire lot, man.
Yeah.
A couple, a couple of things. Now, first of all, are you familiar with the Randall Road softball fields?
Sure.
I haven't been there in years, but is that facility still being used for such purposes?
I was there this weekend for a double header.
Okay. Is there room out there for the Public Works or the Parks and Recreation Department to utilize for such purposes?
Possibly, that was one spot, we, we looked at many, many locations, you know, looking at some schools, areas that maybe they could use, school parking lots, the on-off hours. We, we just kept coming back to this one as, as the easiest spot to build on. And it's already city-owned, it's, it was vacant. Randall Road could possibly work.
And I was just curious, when I heard that there was no lighting planned, is there going to be a certain set time? Or will it change as the seasons change, daylight savings, when people have to vacate? Because I'm worried about the security purposes.
Ten to seven, I believe is what's been discussed.
And obviously, probably three seasons, it's not going to be used when there's snow on the ground.
Right.
And so, it's seven o'clock for the seasons that it's open. Because it's obviously light till nine o'clock in June, so.
Right, and it's not in, you know, in April, or, you know, October. So, it, you know, it, probably it'll be until there's no more light and they can't find the ball.
Similar to every elementary and middle school practice field.
Right.
Where school courts take place.
Right.
That are not lit.
That are not, yes.
I have lit the field with my headlights before.
Yeah, so, okay.
Because when there's overruns to a set time period, you know, the impact of the neighbors, impact of security and safety, so on and so forth. I'm, I'm all in favor of this, but those are my concerns.
Yeah, Mr. Najin?
One of the things, and this actually kind of falls one of the ordinances that's in, that's in place right now concerning public property. But, there's been some discussion, I know in the past, about hours at parks in general. And so, maybe that's something that we, that we revisit as kind of like, either like a dawn-to-dusk type thing, or we set hard hours or something like that, and I think that that would probably have to go through council. But I just want to bring it back up, because it is a concern for, for folks that have public parks without lights. Like, when it, where are they actually open, when are people allowed at them?
Okay, all right, anything else?
I have a comment.
Yes, Ms. Cox?
To the gentleman who's a landlord, I appreciate your comments and your concerns. And the opportunity for you is to recruit some of these folks who might be excited to live across the pickleball court. And so, it might be an amenity for you to offer at a future point, if the concerns around time of day and sound are, are met with good stewardship by the users of the court.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Am I allowed to say one thing, too?
No.
Just to put it.
Go ahead.
Okay, well, you want to talk to me, so I'd like to talk back. One thing is, too, like, I did a Google search about pickleball and neighborhoods, and, I mean, the things that I read did not sound too good. So, that's why this is where my concerns were, with the noise, acoustic effects. In some of these towns, they even put up barriers and all this stuff that would be expensive. I'm all for the pickleball, I just don't think this is a good location.
Okay.
Like, I think they should be able to play at night. I play tennis now, I just think they should find a different location.
Okay, thank you.
Seems like you had one, at one point, you had a plan with Dunbar Lake Hill, you had whole pickleball courts, you were going to have a bathroom, etc., there isn't any.
We unfortunately don't do the planning, the budgeting, or the setting of the hours. We assess whether they meet a code for ability to cite it.
Okay. All right, I'm, before all done discussing, we'll entertain a, a couple of motions.
A bunch. I'm happy to kick it off.
Sure.
Please do. I'd like to begin by making a finding in accordance with Article twelve, Section seventeen, off-street parking and loading, that the proposed ten parking spaces for public pickleball courts at fifty-five North Temple Street, a facility for non-intensive outdoor recreation, are sufficient for the proposed use.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and any further discussion? In that case, I'll call the roll. Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Najin?
Yes.
Michael Marcock?
Yes.
Shanna Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Lee Albert?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson? Yes.
I'd like to make a motion. To make a motion, that the application submitted by the City of Lewiston Public Works Department for public pickleball courts at fifty-five North Temple Street meets all of the necessary standards for a conditional use permit contained in the Zoning and Land Use Code in Article ten, Section three, standards for conditional use permits, including the following conditions. Prior to any building permits being issued, a National Resource Protection Act, NRPA, permit shall be acquired for the disturbance of the wetland buffer. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant will provide updated plans and application materials that address planning review comments B through F. I'm going to add one more, but that's correct. You need me to include G through H, because we, you said they were addressed?
Yes, yes, through up, yeah.
And then, a final condition, that the trees meet city ordinances and reflect the staggered pattern.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Roger, do, any further discussion on, by the board? In that case, I'll call the roll. Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Najin?
Yes.
Michael Marcock?
Yes.
Shanna Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Lee Albert?
Yes.
Lucy Bissin?
Yes.
Alright. Thank you very much for coming, everyone.
One more.
One motion. One more? Yes.
Oh, there's three. Okay.
We're really excited for you, but we're not quite done. Uh, hang on a second. The last motion, can I just please reference the following, the preceding conditions? Do I need to repeat everything word for word that I just said?
Yeah, that's fine.
Great. So, I'd like to make a motion that the application submitted by the City of Lewiston Public Works Department for public pickleball courts at fifty-five North Temple Street meets all of the necessary criteria contained in the zoning and land use code, including, but not limited to, Article thirteen, Section four approval criteria, and that approval be granted with the preceding conditions from the motion previous.
Okay. Do I have a second? Okay. Christine, any further discussion? Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Najin?
Yes.
Michael Markot?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Lee Albert?
Yes.
Lucy Bissin?
Yes.
Alright. Thank you very much, everyone, for coming, and, um, hope you enjoy the pickleball. And I hope you're not too noisy for the neighbors.
Yeah.
Yes.
Didn't expect it to be a pickleball issue.
Yeah, I went out today. We wouldn't play it, obviously.
It's more like carpet, like, maybe on occasion, but.
Oh, it's gorgeous out there, too.
They're friggin' spouses.
It wasn't that wet, no. They had a couple areas that, you know, but other than that, no, if you kept them on.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, if you wish to speak, ladies.
It's only that agenda item and not our meeting that's done. Would ask you to bring your revelry into the hallway.
Okay. Other business. Do we have any other business, Ms. Norton? And there are no minutes to be read, because, uh, Linda, Linda's on vacation.
Yep, not ready.
And, uh, just.
Can I ask a quick question before we adjourn?
Sure, absolutely. No, not.
I'm just, um, checking in on our schedule over the coming weeks, if we, if we can. So, we have the, the next one's the twenty-second, and we have the twenty-third.
Mm-hmm. Yes. Twenty-third is a joint meeting that we were supposed to discuss, the, the letter we sent out, but I think it's a little bit late to discuss it. But, we're gonna get together and, and discuss other things, or whatever.
And then we'd meet the fifth and the nineteenth, no, in June? Um, twelfth and the?
The fifth, I don't know. The twelfth and the twenty-sixth.
Second and the fourth.
Second and fourth, so twelfth and twenty-sixth, correct.
Yes. So, um, I did wanna actually talk to you about the twenty-second and twenty-third.
Okay.
Um, so what we have on the agenda for the twenty-second, for the regular planning board meeting, is the new firehouse at nine J.D. Way, off of Molson Way. Um, and then the other item would be looking at the Riverfront Island master plan. We should have, uh, copies to you and, you know, hopefully, a week in advance of the meeting. Um, we can hold a public hearing, and then you can make a recommendation to council. So, that was our thought for the twenty-second. On the twenty-third, in addition to your conversation, um, with the council about your, your letter, um, the council, it's a special meeting, and so the council may or may not choose to take action on the Riverfront Island master plan that night. Um, so the thought was that that could be a joint discussion item. If you wanna discuss any of it with the board, uh, then there's also the possibility that we will have a traffic study back on the Farwell, um, parcel that Gendron owns, that there was a rezoning request that, um, didn't move forward. So, those are the items that might be discussed on the twenty-third.
Okay.
Um, originally, staff had questioned whether we should meet on the twenty-third at five-thirty to do the fire station, um, and then whether you would wanna take action on the Riverfront Plan during the special meeting. It just feels a little gummed up. I think it's better that we have the meeting on the twenty-second.
Yeah.
And hold the public hearing. So, that's, that's what we were thinking. I don't think it would be a very long meeting, is my guess.
Right. But I think, um, I, I think we were better off to have our own meeting on the fire station and the, our, uh, the riverfront, and then we can discuss it again the next night. Um, Josh?
I just wanted to bring up a couple of things really quickly. One is that, when we discussed possibly looking at the, uh, the shelter overlay, like, is that something that we could possibly move into, uh, a joint, uh, session discussion?
We have made that request, uh, five times.
Yeah.
Could we ask for it to be on the, and is that the conversation we wanna have in light of the letter? Maybe a good case example of a joint activity we could undertake for good purpose?
If the board wants to ask for that to be, you know, asked of the council, whether you could discuss that with them that night, I mean, you could certainly make that request.
And, and adjacent to that, and, or complimentary to that, one, one of the things that I've been thinking about quite, quite a bit is just like, the conditional use permits and the way in which they're issued, um, as well as, so, going along the concept of like, possibly exploring, uh, you know, scrapping the shelter overlay or, or changing it in some way, what about if we get to a point where we're actually defining where our downtown business zone is, and then also, like, discuss ways in which we could possibly issue conditional use permits for businesses that would not be the highest and best use for land that's worth one-point-five million dollars per acre?
Could the downtown boundary of downtown business area be part of that larger TIF conversation that it feels like we've had in parts, but not whole? So, there's been discussion about a TIF district for the downtown as a whole, and wouldn't that be an appropriate way in which to iden- identify the downtown business area?
Do you know where that conversation lies, Shelley?
My understanding is that before, we would be able to, and, and this is my memory of my discussion with the economic development staff, obviously, I, they're, they would know this better, that there's a requirement at the state level that we would do a plan before we could actually identify a TIF district for the downtown. So, there's some planning work, and we would need to, um, probably spend some money, because we don't have staff capacity to do that in-house before we could actually do that. So, I think, I imagine, I don't know what that plan entails, that some of what you're talking about would be part of what that plan would be teasing out.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, I'm, I'm just trying to get to a point, like, for instance, when we issued the, like, we just issued a conditional use permit for the, for the, um, pickleball court, right? And there were several complaints about, like, the possibility of the noise level, right? And, like, I'm not saying that, that.
One. There was one.
It's one, well, there was one, right. Yeah, I'm not saying it's either here nor there, but, for instance, if we issue a, a conditional use permit for, uh, a, um, for businesses that have performance standards, or even when you own an apartment building, and you receive several complaints for your tenants, you have, there's a review process. Like, you basically get fined. You're, you know, you have to make corrections. And so, the thing is, when we issue a conditional use permit, if the standards aren't met, like, how does, how does that conditional use permit get revoked? It doesn't, right? If, if it's not written as, as, as a standard?
What do you mean, if those standards aren't met? You mean after the fact, if they, if something changes?
I mean, like the warehouse space, okay? Like the warehousing, that, that people on Summit were complaining, that it's noisy, it's, it's vibrating, it's, it's stuff, and they say they, they didn't know it was happening. Um, I felt like saying, yeah, you did.
Butter notices go out when the.
Yeah, I, I mean, you did. You got the notices that this was being converted over the last umpteen years. So, it's, people just don't pay attention to the notices that they receive. I wasn't gonna say that to these people, because I didn't wanna start a, start a, you know, but, I mean, like, they're complaining, they're bitching, they're moaning, but nobody's made any, any complaints to the city.
So, another way to frame it, Shelley, is, uh, it'd be helpful if the planning board knew the actions and matter of recourse for issues on a parcel that has had a conditional use granted. So, maybe just being able to tell us, once a conditional use has been made, if there are XYZ, then ABC happens, we will never tell you, planning board. Like, whatever it is, can we just know what the process is after? And feel free to follow up.
I, I guess, I'll, I'll just say that, right now, the way the ordinance is written, the conditional use permit, when you read that section of the ordinance, it specifies that it's only good for what it was approved for. So, for example, you just did a conditional use permit for a temporary shelter for a two-year period, right? So, um, in the approval letter, we copied that language stating that it's only for what it's approved for. If you make any changes, it, you know, would be null and void. If they stop the use for twelve months, it ceases to be approved as a conditional use. So, there are things already in the ordinance that I think are pretty clear. You know, I guess the question becomes, if somebody makes changes and staff doesn't know about it, then, then there's an issue there, but otherwise.
I'm hearing a different question.
Yeah.
Which, just to say it out loud, I think the answer to your question, Josh, is, once a conditional use has been granted and no change in use or ownership has happened, then there is no recourse.
So, yeah, basically, there, there are conditions in which we issue a conditional use permit, right? And, and we always assume that, that it's going to be the best, uh, you know, that, that we're not gonna have a problem, right? Um, but when things come up that violate the original, uh, outline, um, for the conditional use permit, what is the recourse?
What you heard.
And it doesn't matter if it's from us.
Well, no, and I think what you heard today is not issues that shows a violation of the conditional use. It is issues with the use that was made conditional. And so, if they hit a sound decibel issue related to code and ordinances that are on the, that's not related to the use we allowed, it's related to noise separately.
Yeah.
Yeah. If we said, yes, you get to use this as a warehouse, and then warehousing is noisy.
Right.
Right.
Then there is no recourse to say, never mind, we now know that that sucks.
When we issue those out, though, is disturbance.
So, it isn't part of the condition. I mean, the, the noise level is not, is not addressed in the conditional use. Okay?
Not unless specifically it was a condition or a criteria or something. But, um, if somebody is violating the noise ordinance, there's different decibels of sound for different districts and requirements, that it be a maximum of that at the property line. That is something that we routinely investigate if we get complaints. At this point in time, all we've had is people mention it, but nobody has asked, has actually complained in, in the format that we would actually investigate it. You know, people have told individual staff, you know, friends of a staff have complained, and they've said, okay, well, you need to file a noise complaint, and they don't. Or, in this case, we have people at the public hearing, which isn't the venue for making a formal complaint to code enforcement. So.
Right.
We, we don't, haven't investigated, because there's been no ask.
Formal complaint, right.
Okay, yeah, I, I think we're talking somewhat differently, but I think we're, we're basically saying the same thing. So, so ultimately, once we issue a conditional use permit, there is no way to revoke that conditional use permit.
Unless they, they violate the conditions that we specifically added to.
Like, if they start doing a completely different use, then sure. Or if it was a temporary use, and they've gone over the time period, or is if related in the ordinance, if they cease using it for a twelve-month period, they can't resume. So, there are certain things that would make the conditional use, um, approval null and void.
Right.
So, I brought up the calendar for a reason. I'm gonna close this loop. Uh, I am gone and will not be here, and I would, it's, uh, my twins are gonna graduate, we're leaving on a cross-country road trip, and the next couple of weeks are gonna be nutty, and so I'm making a record of this now, so that I'm not bad for forgetting to let you know. I will not be here on the nineteenth.
Of June?
Yeah. Uh, the twenty-sixth.
Right.
Sorry, I will not be here for the meeting on the twenty-sixth.
On the twenty-sixth, okay.
And if I show up on the tenth, you should be surprised and excited. It's dicey.
July tenth.
Yes.
Okay.
Three weeks. Colorado, Utah.
Ooh.
Back home.
Yeah.
It's the last chance for the three brothers to spend time together. So, I will be gone and away. Technically, I come back the ninth, but.
Right.
I'm, I might not be prepared to read your box of materials and show up skippy at five-thirty on the tenth, so.
Okay.
Can I ask a learning question?
Sure.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 don't be sorry.
The budget piece. So, when does that happen? And I, I say this in light of the larger city budget issues. I imagine a pickleball court is not a super costly endeavor, but it felt rather cavalier that we're okay installing the courts, but have not considered the upkeep.
Well, it's, it's been in the LCIP.
Yeah.
So, that's where it, it gets put in.
But maintenance would be in their operation budget.
We don't see that.
Right.
We don't see them in the operation budget.
Public Works' operation budget, versus this is capital improvement that they got, the project to build it was made.
So, they're accounting for it somewhere.
They'll build it into their operational budget.
Right, yeah. They'll put it in, like, in, in the street, street maintenance and, and the parking lot maintenance of all the schools and the fire department and all that. You know, that, cleaning this or, or, you know, that will be part of, of their normal day-to-day budget.
To, to be honest, I, I can say that, that generally, LCIP has bonded funds normally, so we're borrowing, um, in, in order to, to do them. Um, the, Public Works has a lot of projects that have, that have started, that they have a difficult time finding the funding to continually run all the, all the way through, but it is a maintenance issue. It's not a, like, we don't borrow for maintenance. Uh, we try very hard not to borrow for maintenance.
We would be worried if we saw in the capital improvement plan, an earmarker budget line for ongoing maintenance of something, because that doesn't belong in the capital improvement plan.
Right.
And so, you would see it, from a learning perspective, you would see it in the budget that's presented to council and the budget review process, and you could show up as a citizen and ask those questions in that space, but it wouldn't come to us in this space.
Well, and that whole group can show up and ask for funding for higher fences and more parking.
Right, more light, and light, a bathroom, whatever, you know? But that's, but that's their problem, you know?
So, we should probably adjourn?
Yes, yes. So, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh, can I clarify?
Sure.
Is the board asking that the joint special meeting on the twenty-third include a discussion about the shelter overlay district? That was discussed, but it didn't look like I had a consensus or clarity or a direction.
I don't think that, that, uh, we should discuss it at this time. I think it, it, you know, we need to discuss it.
I think it should be a separate.
I think it should be a separate, uh, issue that we discuss with them where we have more time, because if we're doing Riverfront and we're doing a bunch of other things, um, you know, we're gonna run out of time.
Well, and I think it was a big subject with them in the first place, so I imagine it'll be a lot of discussion.
It'd be nice to set our, our goal of a stronger working relationship up for success.
Right.
And the Riverfront Island master plan is a good.
Is a good one. And I think at the, at that joint meeting, we can ask them, we can talk about, let's get together again. We need to talk about, uh, this shelter overlay. So, let's schedule a joint meeting that discusses just the shelter overlay.
Or possibly even guided by council too, right?
Right, right.
Ultimately, I, I think that probably council has some.
Oh, they've got some very specific ideas, so, uh, okay. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yay. Hey.
Yeah, that feels good. No, we're not gonna lie.
Can I leave all these papers with you?
Yeah, that's what we all do. Just leave them on the desk here.
You're gonna need a cart to take all our papers away today, Shelley.
I will.
The box, or the box.
I didn't bring the box. No, normally I do, but I, yeah, we get to know each other. Bring off? You leaving love notes for council, or you want this piece of paper in your chair?
No.